Good evening and welcome to the March 5th Board of Selectmen's meeting. Start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Full crew tonight. Any opening comments, Josh? I'll resume mine till the end. Well said. Tony, you want to take anything out of order here?
We can if you'd like.
Well, maybe we've got a lot of people that probably get some swearing in on some call firefighters. We've got swearing in of interim town clerk. Probably need to do that first, right? So that she can swear in the firefighters. We've got the town moderator with us tonight. That has to give a sign of approval to all of this. And while we do that.
Sure, I'll give a quick update. The last time we met about the interim town clerk, we had posted the position according to the town charter and allowed for folks to put their names in for submission to be considered as the interim town clerk. All three submissions that we got have also pulled papers to run for the clerk position. So we decided that we were going to search for somebody that wasn't going to be running for the position and someone that had clerk experience to help us with the presidential primary that occurred this past week. So that's what we did. We ended up hiring a woman named Etta, actually out of Mayor McGee's office, that ran elections up in Lowell. And she came in and helped us on a contract basis this week and got us through the primary along with Carol Nelson, who's been working for Peggy Barrell, the former clerk, for quite some time. And the two of them did a great job getting us through the primary this past week. So I thank them both for helping us out. Carol has also offered to be the interim town clerk between now and Election Day, April 25th. And you know, as someone that's been in the office for some time now, working under the former clerk, I think it's a great option for the town. And that's where we are. So per the charter, it requires a vote of the board. And I think if you switch to 2C.
Oh, we switched it up.
Alright, so what's your motion, Mark? Let's see it here. Oops, another one. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Carol Nelson as interim town clerk for Section 3-13 of the Nahant Town Charter.
Second, any discussion on motion? Saying here and then? On the table?
Aye.
Hey, Dave. Dave, Dave.
Great, Carol, so I have to swear you in. So after I say "I," you state your name, yes? So I...
Carol Nelson.
...do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Massachusetts and all local ordinances, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of town clerk for the town of Nahant according to the law and to the best of my ability. Do you so swear?
I so swear.
I hereby congratulate you.
Carol, thank you for stepping up. You did a great job during the primary. Everything seemed to go very smoothly. Thanks for stepping in, we really appreciate it. So you have your first responsibilities tonight here. We have a number of our call firefighters that have passed the academy training this past week. So we'd like to try to get them sworn in. Tony, try to take over there. You know, we need to get these kids home to bed early, you know? Get them first.
I'm missing that one in my book. Mark, can we go to 2D?
See, I got nothing in 2D.
Is this a motion or is this just a swearing in? It's just a swearing in, so...
I don't have anything in my book yet. Fine.
Alright, apologies for that. This past year, the fire department with retirements and a number of other things saw a decrease in the call fireman count. And we led through the Nahant Fire Department, put together a campaign to really encourage the hiring of a new class, changed some of the ways that we are doing things at the fire department as far as paying our call firemen and enticing folks to go through the academy. And it was a very... It was a quick process, getting the applications out, getting folks to get through physicals and get them into the academy. But with the leadership down at the fire department and with the candidates that are about to be sworn in, everybody really pulled together in a short timeframe to get this done. It's an extraordinary commitment and dedication to go through the Call Fire Academy. All four of these new firefighters have, you know, had to go to class at night, travel on their own time, and really make a commitment over quite a few months, so...
Trust me, I'm fully aware of it.
Yes, you are.
Taking care... I see a lot of you have children, so you know, one of your classmates is Doug Cronin, who happens to be my son-in-law. So I had to step in and do a lot of babysitting over the last several months, so I know what you went through. And you know, I want to say that you should all thank your families for the support they gave you while you were going through that academy. I know that they really had to step up. Go ahead, Tony, sorry.
So I just would like to invite Carol up, our new clerk. They've all been appointed already, but this is a ceremony to swear each... All four, so that's all four call firemen that just completed the academy, to come on up. And Carol's going to swear you in. And we'll take a picture with the other members of the fire department.
Here, Carol.
Seeing that you went through everything as a group, we're going to keep her as a group. I'll read it once. When I say "I," I'm going to go to each of you. State your name. Okay, I...
Douglas Cronin.
I...
Tara Driscoll.
I...
William Huzzy.
I...
Devin Skudus.
There you go. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Massachusetts and all local ordinances, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of a firefighter for the town of Nahant according to the law and the best of my ability. I so do swear.
Yes, yes.
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 Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Congratulations, I have to congratulate you.
Tony, am I investigating anything else? Um, no, we can go back to the opening comments.
Do we have no minutes to approve tonight?
Yeah, we do later. We skipped over opening comments, so if you want to go back to the top and then get... Or if you want to... Cross, we just did those two. So if you want to come back up here and hit these opening comments.
Okay.
That should be right.
But we have no minutes to approve?
We do.
Oh, right here, okay, good enough.
We're going to do the opening comments, yeah? Or did you want to wait?
Tony, on the minutes, I probably can't hold on, because I wasn't hearing any of them anyway, so... Richie's not here.
Okay, so if you want to just announce, it will hold off until next time.
Charles Kelly Scholarship. So we're accepting essays now. They do April 1st, so any aspiring students who are interested in applying? What's a $1,000 scholarship, Tony?
$1,000 scholarship, due April 1st. Please type a short essay on what community service means to you. Please do not put your name on the essay. And we will be making the announcement at the annual town meeting.
Secondly, the Solarized Team will be hosting the informal meetings at the Nahant Life Saving Station every Thursday in the month of March from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Tony, can you put a little context to that, maybe?
They're actually here tonight, and I'll let them, after our next announcement here, we'll invite them up and allow them to do...
Okay. Beach stickers will be available for purchase on Nahant.org as of Monday, March 16th. So they get online and get those. And I know that there's a mechanism, you can still buy them here at Town Hall, can't you? No?
I think you have to go on Nahant.org in order to purchase them.
Are there some people that may not have access? How would they go about doing that?
We have a computer here at the town, so we can walk them through it. If they come into the Town Hall, we can walk them through that process.
Okay, great. So if you don't have access at home, if you're not computer literate, then please just come up to Town Hall and we'll walk you through that process. Good, so... Okay, the clerk is telling me that you should have submitted your census and your dog license, if you have any, right? Prior to that, huh? Before you can receive a beach sticker, so... Okay, good enough. Alright, with that, we're going to have the Solarized Team one up.
Hello. I'm Ellen Goldberg, 8 Highland Road. I am the solar coach for the Solarized Campaign for Nahant. For those of you who don't know, we are running a campaign called Solarize North Shore with our neighbors in Swampscot and Salem. What this is, is a tri-community engagement with support from Mass D O E R, where we have support from them to have negotiated rates with solar PV installers, solar hot water installer, and air source heat pumps. So we have a negotiated contract with each one of those installers that has been selected for these three towns. And this campaign is... We are right in the middle of it, and it's going to end on April 30th. So I encourage anybody who has any questions or is interested in any of these technologies for your home to come see us every Thursday night in March down at the Life Saving Station. We can answer any questions. We can set you up with any of the installers to talk some more. This is a no-pressure situation, but if you're really interested in solar or any of these advanced green technologies, now's the time, because we have some really good contracts in place available for everybody in Nahant. So every Thursday in Nahant, we're going to be at the Life Saving Station from 7 to 9. I would also like to personally invite everybody here. Everybody in Nahant is welcome. March 21st, at 7 o'clock, we're going to have a local wine tasting made with Nahant wine at the Bass Point Function Room. At 7 o'clock, Saturday, March 21st, no charge, free, come, enjoy. And it's going to be sponsored by our campaign. So we'd just love to have everybody here. Come join us at this wine tasting. Locally Nahant-made wine, very cool. I am Ellen Goldberg. You can reach us at SolarizeNorthShore.org. If anybody wants my cellphone number, I'm happy to give it. I guess I don't want to put it on cable TV, but if you want it, just flag me down and I'll be happy to talk to you some more. Anybody on our team can give you more information. I just want to make sure I've gotten all my main points. It's really good technology and it's really good pricing. We have three solar installations, three solar PV, the panels that go on your roof. Those contracts, we have three for Nahant, we have two solar hot water. And I am not sure about the air source heat pumps, but that's what we've gotten from this campaign already. And again, if anybody is interested or even curious, come down. We have sample numbers. I have my contract that you can look at, so you can see what my savings are. The tax incentives are going to be going down next year. They're significant right now, so it's a really good time. So the tax incentives, smart money, plus the campaign together can really help bring your costs down and bring this technology to your home. I'm going to keep it that short. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
So one of the advantages, I guess, would be that these vendors have all been vetted, so anybody who's thinking about this doesn't need to worry about, is this a reputable company?
Exactly.
I guess the other advantage would be it's effectively a group discount.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, it's a pretty good discount.
So you get a discount and assurance that you have reputable vendors, so...
Definitely reputable vendors. The representatives from Nahant, so we have a team of five people in Nahant. We have our representatives and our colleagues in Salem and Swampscot. And we all, along with Mass D O E R, the Solarized people in the state, as well as a technical consulting firm, went through a competitive bid process and evaluated numerous bids and scored them according to metrics and had in-person interviews and phone interviews with all the installers and selected the best of the bunch based on a number of metrics. So you don't have to worry, these are not fly-by-night companies. These are definitely all on the up and up. The contracts are solid, we examined all the fine print. It's very solid. But if you want to know more and you have any questions at all, come see us at the Life Saving Stations on Thursday. We have hot chocolate and cookies.
I'll, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say thank you to Ellen and your team for all the work that you guys have done and for working with the, our neighboring towns as well on this. Ellen was part of the Green Communities Team and really jumped on top of this opportunity, and it's almost, it's been hands-off as far as the town goes, the committee's been able to put all this stuff together to help out the residents, and just appreciate the time that you and your team have volunteered to help out other residents in town and working with the other communities, just want to say thank you.
Thank you, yeah, we're really excited about it, we want, if anybody is interested, we really want to encourage you to come investigate now, because it is a really good time to do so. Tax incentives, smart money, negotiated rates, it really makes it very affordable, almost like you can just replace your electric bill with a loan payment based on solar, it's it's, it's a complete win, so I really encourage people to come by, and don't forget, March 21st, 7:00, Bass Point Function Room, personal invitation, local wine tasting, please join us.
Ellen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your team, Johnny Zimmerman, you're on the team also, thanks for pitching in, it sounds exciting, and it sounds like a great opportunity for the residents, is there any website that can access?
Solarizernorthshore.org.
Okay, and can we put a link on that for a while?
Solarizernorthshore.org, again, the campaign, that means the negotiated rates are going to end April 30th. The smart money and the incentives from the state and the federal taxes, they will still be available, but the negotiated contracts will be completed by April 30th, so the companies have signed on to do these contracts through April 30th, if you sign by April 30th, you'll still get the rates, doesn't have to be installed by April 30th, but it does have to be signed by April 30th. But then you won't get those rates, again, until whenever this happens again, which I don't even think it ever happened here before, so I would encourage you to, now's the time to act.
So every Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00?
At the Life Saving Station, we'll be there, having our regular solarized meetings, and we're there with paperwork and documentation to help you understand it, answer any questions, and help connect you with the installers if that's what you'd like to do.
Great, perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Okay, we have some minutes to approve, but I think we're going to put them off, Tony, because I noticed that that they're all minutes prior to me becoming a member of the board, so I couldn't really vote on them anyway, so you wouldn't have a majority here, so we'll do them next time we meet. Ongoing business, we have John Moore from Play It As It Lies at Kelly Green's, wants to talk about his proposal to the town, and why don't you come on up, Dan, could he sit in here, or do you want to?
Or you can sit down here.
Do you want to have questions for us, how do you?
No, you know, I think that probably if we could just, I know that you've been working with town council and town administrator regarding some of the issues that have arisen over the lease, those types of things, and you've been going back and forth.
Yes, just like on the capital.
So maybe you could summarize your position and?
Yeah, it's just the extraordinary cost of bringing, over the last few years, of bringing it up to code through handicap accessible, fire code, sorry, okay, bringing up the code through fire, handicap accessible, health code and so forth, was a great amount of money that we never realized when we took over the spot. When we took over the lease, we thought there'd be more capital improvement funds that would be given to us over, you know, a five-year period or even a 10-year period, and that has caused a really severe financial strain trying to pay the rent and so forth, in order to run the golf course as legit, 100%, you know, up the code facility. So with this, it's just been difficult to pay these rents, so we have asked for more rent relief through the capital improvement funds that I thought would be available to us when we first took over the lease back in 2017. So we were pretty much asking, since we just have a five-year contract as opposed to a 10-year contract or even a 15, spread out that long, we wanted the capital improvement money to be condensed into a five-year, well, now I'm asking for a four-year, even half of it into a four-year contract instead.
So you're asking for the abatement parts that were spread out over, they're amortized over 10 years to bring them down to five years?
Yes.
And would you adjust the terms of the lease accordingly?
Uh, yes. Yeah, through the last proposal that we sent.
We have your proposal.
Yes.
And is there any changes to what's written here?
Uh, no, not in the last one, as far as I got, as far as, and then the lease at the end of October 31st. It says, the finance restraint is so difficult in the wintertime, it says, no matter what we do, it says, you know, Nahant is like to hibernate, and it's just tough to bring people down there from November until March, and that's okay, I hibernate myself in the winter, but it's tough to pay bills down there in the winter, you know, I expect this summer to be the best summer we've ever had. We've already, we've had many events, showers and wedding showers and anniversary parties, people in town, they have events down there, some charity golf tournaments, I'm hoping to resurrect the Nahant arts and have it, possibly looking at June 27th on a Saturday, I'm looking to put some more local Nahant artwork throughout the place, and also beautify the outdoor area. You know, we don't have much financial equity, but I have plenty of sweat equity that I can still put down there into the outdoor grounds. I really want that place to be realized to the whole town to enjoy, I think there's so much more potential down there through the years to come. I think it's just not a private clubhouse for 20, 30 people, that's been in the past. I think it's a great opportunity for more people to enjoy the clubhouse, and the grounds that we have down there, I think we should be planting gardens down there and growing our own vegetables, and I think there's great opportunity for more kids to get involved down there also. That's one part, one of the parts I've probably been disappointed the most is the lack of junior golfers that, you know, maybe I'm a little self-prejudiced because I grew up playing golf down there and I thought it was the greatest thing in the world, you know, be down there from 9:00 AM to 9:00 o'clock at night, but it's just tough to get the kid, junior golfers down there. But I'd love to see more of that, but I might make another effort this year to try to get some more, even host some junior tournaments to get the kids down there for the next generation. So hopefully they care about the course as much as I did, as well as all the kids I grew up with in Nahant at my age that still come down to visit and so forth and enjoy the facility.
All right, so we have, that's one of the agenda items for our executive session.
Yes.
Later on, so I'm sure we'll go through the proposal in executive session, and if we have questions, we'll get them compiled and.
Okay.
I just wanted to, just for clarification, a moment.
Sure, sure.
All right, John, we got a letter from your attorney dated February 27th, 2020, that's the proposal you're currently considering, is that right?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Because it's a little different than the original one, so we have just some basic questions.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
One is, you mentioned that if the town waived $20,000 of abatement and rent for 2019, that you would pay the outstanding rents.
Yes.
What's your understanding as to what the outstanding rents is?
Well, we owe it like about half of October, say if November, December was taken care of, we owe half of October. Through a $15,000 capital improvement relief, we get January and half of February off, so it would take February.
Were you talking about 2019?
Yeah, yeah, so I would take care of the water bill that is outstanding, and then I would take care of October, so I would take care of all the outstanding, if that $20,000.
So my basic estimate is that for 2019, there's about $25,000 of overdue rents, okay? So if the selectmen abated $20,000 of that, does that mean you would come up to be $25,000 and some change?
Yeah, I don't think it's 25, I think it's half, I think it's like 11 or 12 on water, and I, as far as I know, I think it's like $5,000 or $6,000. I think it's more.
Some on rent, some on rent.
Rent, yeah, so, oh, rent, yeah.
We have about $25,000 in terms of rents.
Right, but if they took off 20, I would just owe 5.
Right, so that would be the
Yeah, oh, take, yes.
If we agreed to this, that would, the board agreed to it, it would be $20,000 off of 5 would be outstanding, and that would be that.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, that was my concern.
Oh, yeah, yes, I'm looking to pay everything that's outstanding.
What about the gas and the water sewer?
Oh, yeah, the gas, I think it was $44, yes, exactly.
And the water sewer, that would come?
Yeah, yeah, we're taking care of that also.
That's about 11.
11, yes, the reason why it's been slow also is because we usually get about $30,000 or $40,000 in membership money that's paid by February 1st, it used to be January 1st, but I put it out to February 1st, because it's difficult for a lot of people to come with the membership money right after Christmas, so I put it up to February 1st the last couple of years. But this year, if people, I don't know, it's, you know, it's a small, rumor town, and like all small places, and saying, oh, he's not going to be here this year and so forth, which I've never said, I always wanted to be here, so people have held off on the membership money. So I have about $30,000 to $40,000 in membership money that I expect to come in in the next month. So that's the reason why I'm behind, is really the membership money, because the membership money, that's what gets me through the beginning months of the year every year.
Another bullet point refers to the equipment that you purchased, and you just kind of provided a list that I shared with you.
Yeah, I just made a little estimate, so.
Right, so at some point, really a more definitive list, because, for example, you mentioned kitchen and bar equipment, just generally.
Yeah, that's why I attached like a bigger list for you there, that's more detailed.
This one here?
Yes, it is, yeah, that's the sum of that, I was printing up, going through that, and that has actually a detailed amount that we spent and everything, yeah.
Will you also work with your John, your attorney to get a definitive list, because I think that would be a big issue.
Yes, what I was hoping, if it does go for RFP again, we'll be able to transition this equipment over to the next person. And it's worth more when it's already installed, the big expense for equipment is installing everything. Now it's all beautifully installed, it's set up for the next 15, 20 years, all of our equipment, it's all top-of-the-line equipment, you know, it's all working great and so forth, so it's a great opportunity for the next person to come along.
Is there any debt associated with that?
No. Yes, yes, yeah, nothing's rent, we even, like a lot of restaurants, even lease a dishwasher, we actually bought that. So we just buy our own chemicals, we borrow a $10,000 dishwasher rather than rent one for $300 a month. But yeah, we didn't lease any of the equipment at all, even all the golf course equipment we own, we just leased the golf carts. Golf carts is a lease deal.
And regarding this February 27th proposal, is included in this the earlier proposal you passed, or in terms of the new $15,000? The accelerated abatements, is that included in this? Because it's not in the bullet points.
Um, no, that's not in there, no.
So it's not included, this is separate?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was what we've done the last three years, was the $15,000, so I didn't assume, I thought it was already assumed it wasn't, so that was my mistake. So, I sent an email to Brendan and Tony earlier today about $15,000 for capital improvements.
And what about, some of the rest for 2020?
Yes, yeah, so we get caught up on that by the end of the month, because we expect to get all my membership money in. And then, now, then we really go from doing $3,000 or $4,000 a week to start mid-season till the 15 to 20, all of a sudden $30,000 a week, just in a month or two of timeframe. So that's a huge difference in revenue, without actually adding a whole lot more labor besides a full-time superintendent and some help on the golf course, and maybe another kitchen person or two, but it's not a whole lot more expenses, we have it trimmed down a lot more now over the last year. Which, you know, that comes with any restaurant business, is that you learn to trim staff a little bit more, any labor costs as you get to go along. So I trim any menu and find out what people like more, so you don't need as many people to carry it out.
Okay, as Josh had said, that we are taking this up at executive session.
Okay.
So we're going to take it under advisement at this point, we can get back to you and
Okay.
Dan can talk to your attorney and
Okay.
hopefully we can resolve some issues.
Okay, great, thank you very much, okay. Thanks. Okay, thanks.
Aye, John, yep.
Night, John.
Okay, so on ongoing business, we need to open town warrant.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the May 16th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for submission of articles onto the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second, any discussion on the motion, seeing here in none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, in front of you is the edited version of the last town meeting warrant that we approved, and it's track changed, you can see on the first page, in Article 9, we added the sum of money to $30,000 for water sewer equipment and paving. Formerly it just said a sum of money and we were able to nail down that number. On the Article 20, we just changed the language to, from Enterprise Resource Planning Software to simplifying it, Municipal Finance Software. Article 22, Sewer Capital. We got language from DEP regarding the Sewer Rate Relief Fund, which we were approved. So we had to put in specific language here that would give us the proper authority to borrow through the Clean Water Trust. And Article 28, the Planning Board, they're working with Town Council right now on a municipal park land dedication article. We have many parks in town that they are just looking to formally dedicate them as park-protected. So they're working with Town Council right now on the official language, but I added that placeholder in there. Then the rest of the edits on here are just rearranging the numbers after that. More, you know, articles are, there are other articles that are still under review that, should we have to add them in? We'll open and close the warrant again at a future Board of Select meeting. Right now, our pressure is to have the final warrant and budget numbers sent to the printer by the end of the first week of April, so we have some time that we can make some more changes if need be.
Right, sounds good.
So for Article 9 in the budget that we sent to INCOM, we have it there for a placeholder for that?
We had $30,000 in there, we just didn't have the $30,000 in the language of the article.
So there's no impact to the budget?
From that, from that specific one, correct. Correct, there are some, the next item in our agenda is to make some edits to the budget, but none of them are due to these changes to the warrant.
And I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept and close the Annual Town Meeting Warrant as presented and to send it to the Advisory and Finance Committee to begin taking positions with the understanding that ongoing review will occur by the Board of Selectmen and that modifications may occur at a later date. Second, any discussion on the motion, seeing here in none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to the budget.
I can explain that before you make your motion, if you would like.
Okay, yeah.
So what you'll see here on that first page, highlighting the changes in the budget, I would, I refer to these as like third reading-type changes, they're minimal. As we, as we go through the budget and double-checking numbers, making sure that they are accurate, and we have to make some changes, we have to go through the process of the Board approving those changes, so you'll see as far as the general fund budget numbers go, it's a change of $6, so just, you know, due to those changes, doesn't make much of a difference to the bottom line, and then in the water sewer appropriation and water sewer enterprise revenue changes, it's a change we had to make there, resulted in $3,619. And then behind the sheet is the budget, the detailed budget, which you've had. You were provided at the last meeting as well, if you have any other questions.
All right, so stuff moved around a little bit, the net changes, six dollars.
To the, right, except for, on the water sewer enterprise fund. So we had to make a change in there that was worth thirty-six hundred dollars. So on the appropriation side, the thirty-six hundred dollars actually gets reduced from the appropriation side, and then likewise, we reduce it from the revenue side. So because we don't need to spend the extra thirty-six, we don't need to bring in the extra thirty-six hundred on the water and sewer department side. And then on the general fund appropriation, there's a few different, a few changes in there, but collectively, it ends up being a six-dollar difference, yeah.
All right, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the amended board of selectmen budget for FY twenty twenty-one and to forward it to the finance and advisory committee for their ongoing review in the FY twenty twenty-one budget development process.
Seconded. Any discussion on motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Town administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to the Municipal Modernization Act, it was a requirement that the board approve spending of, I believe, ten thousand dollars or more above the appropriated budget for snow and ice. When that act passed the legislature, it's no longer required. However, wanted to provide an update as we're coming into the, hopefully, the final steps of the winter season. So originally, the budget for FY twenty, snow and ice was budgeted at thirty thousand dollars. You can see here on that first spreadsheet from mostly, mostly cold days throughout the, through the winter, did have some plowing events. But our, our budget there, what we've spent, overspent, is fifty-three thousand five hundred and one dollars. So for, for reference, in the past, in FY, the second page gives you some historical data of what we've spent on snow and ice in the past. So as you can see in... Go to four A. All right, so this is, this is FY twenty. FY twenty, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars for snow and ice. It's the one, it's the one account in the budget that you're lawfully allowed to overexpend. We've over expended it about twenty-three thousand dollars to a total of fifty-three. So what we'll do at the annual town meeting, Article two, I believe now, is line transfer. So we'll take money from unused accounts to shift into the snow and ice account to cover the over expense. So that's FY twenty as of now. This here is historical data. Last year, we ended up spending almost sixty thousand dollars more, about ninety thousand dollars on snow and ice. The year before that, we spent a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars on snow and ice. So it's been a very good year when it comes to weather and overtime and costs associated with snow and ice in that sense. This is historical data.
So I know you just stated, Tony, so the twenty-three thousand dollars that you're looking for for FY twenty will be paid for with existing FY twenty accounts?
Correct.
Transfer ins?
Correct, correct.
At town meeting. So we're not extending it into other funds, reserve fund, or those types of things?
Typically, we're able to find, in the past, I think we've had to dip into the reserve fund. When we, you know, like in FY seventeen or FY eighteen, we went a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over our budget. But this year, this is somewhat manageable, we should be able to find it within our existing budget.
Okay, great.
Next on the, on our, on the town administrator's report is an update to you, the board of health, regarding the coronavirus or COVID-19. We have here Deb Murphy and John Coulon, our town nurse and health inspector, as well to provide an update. We've gotten, well, you know, obviously, this is a hot issue in the, in the news, and we've received quite a few phone calls and emails from folks in town looking for an update from the community. So I'd like to invite them to...
One up here, John.
Come up and...
Please proceed, I'll sit next to the other.
Do you mind starting us off, Deb?
Sure. Well, like Tony just alluded to, there's a lot of questions in town about what our response is to this virus that is on the news every day. I'm sure by now, everybody, everybody has heard about it and knows a little bit about it. In my role as public health nurse, I have been in contact with the Department of Public Health. On Mondays, all the local boards of health have conference calls where we call in, we get the latest updates of the facts, and then there is about a twenty-minute question and answer period for all the communities to get their questions answered. What we know right now for our community and for Massachusetts is that we are still considered a very low risk as far as the severity of the virus. Now, there are still predictions that we haven't seen. This virus is not stopping. As a matter of fact, when you hear the news every day, it seems to be spreading. We have now learned that there are countries where people are strongly advised, well, the travel has actually been stopped, to the level-three countries, which include Japan, China, Iran, and Italy. We've also heard that school trips have been canceled, the spring break trips where a lot of the students would go to Italy. We have no cases in Nahant, and we have no cases in Swamscott right now, where in close communication with the school system for Nahant and for Swamscott. And the question in the schools have been great at providing communication to all the parents. So there's been a lot of transparent communication. Like I said, that we are still being told here in Massachusetts, we only have one confirmed case. We have a couple of hundred people that are being monitored. By that, it means people that are at home, under a two-week quarantine, taking their temperature three times a day and reporting it. And without symptoms after two weeks, these people are free to go. So we, like I said, this is ongoing, we're in constant contact, and as soon as anything changes in our severity, our risk changes, I'm sure, we will, our team here will alert the citizens of anything that needs to be done. In the meantime, the three things that I think we should be doing right now with any virus, including the flu, is washing our hands. Pural is disappearing now, I don't know why, because we've been saying this for the regular flu season, washing hands. The kids in school are being shown the correct way to wash their hands. And if you do have any flu symptoms, right now, the regular flu is, I don't want to say rampant, but our numbers right now are high. So if you have symptoms of the flu, if you have a fever, if you have a cough, you would go to your physician and you would be tested for the seasonal flu, which does not mean you have the coronavirus. The coronavirus testing, you have to have a history of travel or contact with people who have been in those countries. So even though the symptoms seem to be crossing over, it is still, we are still able to differentiate the seasonal flu from the coronavirus. And then the other thing is, we're being told to purchase perishable items for two-week supply in the event that anything would change and we would not want to be out and about in a big area such as a supermarket. So personal items, canned goods. And, John, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I want to emphasize that between public health nurse, Murphy, and myself, I do not believe there is any group, local, state, even at federal level, that is not monitored. We are monitoring our email feeds every day and the Monday conference calls that you referenced. And there are meetings being held on the North Shore and statewide weekly, as well as the daily updates that we are receiving from the federal and state levels and sometimes individually, we receive these updates. And oftentimes, it is collectively when we are meeting with our local and regional colleagues. I also want to assure folks that there is much going on in addition to monitoring activity at the hospital level and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health level. In fact, there was to be an international seafood festival, an annual event at the Boston Convention and Exposition Center. That has been postponed. Been postponed because not only would it be a mass gathering once again, but many of the attendees, exhibitors and such are from around the world, various countries. However, the New England Food Show is still scheduled to occur in three weeks, so there's not a blanket postponing or canceling of events. There is, it's a, it's a measured response at this time while data is being gathered and not only assembled but assessed. It's not just raw data and then action, it is an interpretation of what that raw data Public health nurse, Murphy, and myself have a long history in public health and private sector medicine, and much of what we did in the H1N1 response, which was a global pandemic, applies here as well. I want to emphasize and reemphasize that the advisability of following the same protocols as we say every year and repeatedly throughout the year in response to influenza certainly applies here. People should live a healthy life, people should do what they, what they should do, wash their hands and keep calm. Increase the fluids, fruits, vegetables, clean proteins, all the things that we hope our parents and our doctors and health educators have been teaching us since childhood. There was a, an updated poster provided to me at a statewide meeting I attended yesterday, and it is dated this past Monday. I'll be not only passing it out here, but posting it in our stores in town. And anybody who takes a look at it will notice there's nothing revolutionary here. It's all the same things that we've been saying all along. Emphasis on washing hands, no masks, no, no hand sanitizer, but the usual way that you avoid the influenza, which annually kills far more people than this virus has at this point. I, I'll stop there, and do you have anything to add?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, if, I will be at the senior center this Thursday, January twelfth, doing the blood pressure, blood pressure clinic, and if, I'm sure that some of the people there will have more questions that I'll be happy to address. But I think, I think we've handled or covered the topics that we need to...
Any questions from the board?
No, I don't at this point. Like you said, it seems to be a low risk at this point. We're not shutting down the cars yet, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good news. I would just use if any updates, you know, that were either directed by the state or the federal government, we should probably put on the sign, the digital sign coming into town to let people know. But other than that, I think we're in good hands with it.
There's also a, the, the state has created through, I think, the DPH website, an update page, and I, we have put the request in to have that link to our Nahant homepage as well. So if folks are looking for information, they can go there.
That'd be great, because that's a daily update.
Yeah, things are changing, yeah, things are changing daily. So thank you very much for being here, thank you for providing that update, very helpful. Right, so...
Digging down a Willow Road, I say.
Willow Road gas main replacement work started this week. The completion time is approximately April twenty-ninth, so they'll be out there for two months or so. Construction days will be Monday through Friday, and the hours of construction will be from seven-thirty AM to four PM. Folks should have already seen markings on the, on the, of the utilities on the street, and soon we'll be seeing some excavation, some relays to customers' homes, and the meters with, some, some homes' meters may need to be moved, so there may be temporary interruption of service, but National Grid will reach out to you if you, if, if that is going to occur, and they'll make sure they schedule that with forty-eight hour notice. If anybody's having any issues down there, feel free to call the town hall. We can, we can help with any issue, any issue or help answer any questions. If you smell any gas, please call one eight hundred two three three five three two five.
Couple questions. What's the purpose of the upgrade? Is it, has there been leaks down there or is it going to high pressure or something along those lines?
It's, it's an old, old gas main that is in need of repair for quite some time. That area along Willow Road, along Tudor Beach, constantly subject to title, and we've had a few breaks in the past. I think we had one this past winter, actually, down there, as well as the town's future plans to potentially replace the Willow Road sewer main. So coordinating with National Grid, we advise them that we may be changing that sewer main down the road and that they, and then since they had this on their capital plan anyways, they're getting in before us. So it's a good thing, it should help with preventative leaks or repairs in the future and allows us to, once we are able to pull the trigger on, on moving forward with our Willow Road change, we can, we don't have to worry about waiting for National Grid to get in there and fix their gas, gas main.
And repaving and those types of things.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Do you know anything about any other sections of that on their capital plan? Do you know anything about any other sections of that, on their capital plan?
There, there's quite a large amount, amount of cast iron and, and other material, gas main, gas mains throughout, throughout the town. National Grid's making an effort across their entire service to switch to plastic-type, PVC-type gas mains. So, it's just a matter of them getting through, through their own capital plan, but as they, as they're making repairs, they reach out to us, and at the beginning of each season, summer season or paving season, we sit down with, with National Grid and tell them which, which roads we're planning to hit, and if they have any plans to make repairs there to get in before us, or if they aren't able to and they plan to be getting there in the next year, maybe we'll bump that road down a line, down, down a year in our capital plan. So, we're constantly coordinating with them and, and keeping in mind our own sewer and water utility repair work as well.
See the coordinated effort?
Yeah. I, I understand, a few years ago, Nahat went to sort of high pressure on the gas, and one of the requirements was to move the gas meters from, for those who had them inside the house, outside the house. So I was wondering how they progressing with that?
Through this work, I know that, I know that they, this may, you know, some homes along Willow Road, as they're changing their service lines to, to households, if they have inside meters, they may reach out to schedule a time to take your meter and move it outside. But National Grid hasn't indicated to me that they were pursuing any type of large plan of changing gas meters throughout the town at this time. Seems like they're kind of linking it with existing jobs that they're doing.
I'd be interested at some point, maybe a good request from National Grid to give us a, an updated map of where the leaks have been over the past year. I know that they, they, they do that, we've asked for that in the past. I think they categorize their leaks under three different conditions.
Exactly.
Severe to minor. I'd be interested in seeing that at some point. There was a concern at some point that the gas being leaked is detrimental to trees and shrubs and vegetation, and I think that's really been confirmed. I know a lot of communities have been aggressive in trying to, to hold National Grid accountable for that. So I'd like to, like to see that map at some point.
Yep, I, I have a map of their existing infrastructure that I can share with you that hasn't, the only update is going to be Willow Road.
Yeah.
Once they're done with that job. I got that in the fall, and they try to give us a report quarterly on any existing leaks. When we met with them in the fall, we didn't have any grade 3 leaks, the most urgent repair needed. So they grade them 3, 2, 1, and it's based on how much gas is leaking and how close that leak is to structure. So, you know, if you have a high-grade leak that's in the middle of a field, it, it falls in the priority list of something that might be right outside of a, of a home or something like that, so...
It would be interesting to take a look at that, that map, and then perhaps have Zach, DPW director, just go around and look at the vegetation around where those leaks are, to see if there's been any, any effect on, on vegetation. I know that they had categorized a number of, you know, minor leaks along, back at the town hall a number of years ago, and we were losing trees one year after another there. And I think it happened right across from my house and your house, Josh, also, there's, there's been a number of gas leaks there, and if you look at the, the trees lining the country club there, they're all dying. And I suspect that, that it began, they're being, the root system is being compromised through that gas leak. So I'd like to take a look at that, and then maybe have someone take a ride around town and just take a look at the vegetation. Because I think National, National Grid, at least in the past, would, would compensate us for the replacement of those, those trees. Okay, that's it. All right, we're going into executive session, right?
We've got citizens for...
Oh, we got citizens for... Julie?
Nicely done.
Okay.
Could you get up to the mic and say that? No, I'm just kidding.
Nicely done.
So, we got a motion here. An executive session is necessary to discuss the lease evaluation of real property, Kelly Green's Golf Club, One Willow Road, Nahat, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Northeastern University Marine Science Center, 430 Nahat Road, Nahat, and to protect our litigation position regarding the Northeastern University Marine Science Center, and to discuss an open meeting law complaint filed against the board of selectmen from Ralph Martin, Northeastern University, dated February 6, 2020, acknowledgment of the open meeting law complaint, discussion in response to same. Votes may be taken, we will not reconvene in open session.
That's not a motion, now you do.
Yeah, motion.
So I gotta read the same thing over? A move to go into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, 21A, 6, to discuss the lease evaluation of real property, Kelly Green's Golf Club, One Willow Road, Nahat, regarding One Willow Road, Nahat, and pursuant to messages, general law, C30A, 21A, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Northeastern University Marine Science Center, 430 Nahat Road, Nahat, and pursuant to general law, C, chapter 30A, section 21, purposes and 7, open meeting law, open meeting law complaint filed against the board of selectmen from Ralph Martin, Northeastern University, dated February 6, 2020, acknowledgment of the open meeting law complaint, discussion in response to same. Votes may be taken, we will not reconvene in open session.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poll, there has to be a poll question.
Oh, Josh Antrim, aye.
Not telling an aye. Okay. I want to make a motion to adjourn, or do we need to?
Motion to adjourn.
Regular session.
Open meeting.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.